Yep, I, because of the holiday, all of my client meetings got moved to different times and Tuesday was like the day, so. I don't have any major part in these other, in this other meeting, but I have it on the background, so I can at least hear what's going on. The hustle is real.
All there?
Girl, it's funny, but yeah.
My glasses are like really glaring. I think it's this city computer.
I'm over here trying to get this city computer to, um, let me go past. December the 7th or whatever, and I'm like, um, Chip, you need to be over here. I was saying, I'm bothering right now. I can look at both of. Uh-oh, we live?
I got the blue screen to death on my city computer this week, so.
Yes, I'm lucky. Yes, we are live.
Seven, I'm not sure where Councilmember Reed has not joined yet. Councilmember, um, Lawler did email saying that she will not be attending, um, be able to attend tonight's meeting. But, um, Mayor Protem is after seven, so I will hand it all over to you if you want to get us.
Do we have a quorum?
Don't. No. Yes, Councilmember Reed, she is. Councilmember Reed is on, we're just, um, trying to promote her to a panelist. Mayor Protem, if you would like to, um, you're good to go.
Okay, thank you. City Council, this is our City Council regular meeting, Tuesday, January the 19th. Please turn off all your cell phones, um, or put them on silent, please. Like to call this meeting to order with a moment of silence to be observed. Okay. At this time, if you could join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clark Domingo, can you take roll call, please?
Councilmember Clark, Reed, Jackson.
Here.
Waller. Lanu.
Here.
Williamson.
Yep, yes.
And Mayor Snyder.
Since Councilwoman Reed didn't acknowledge being here, we need to make sure that she is in fact able to hear and and, uh, respond before we can proceed. Otherwise, we won't have a quorum.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay, I'm here. Okay. So at this time, can I have a motion to approve our agenda, including any proposals, additions, deletions, and any changes to the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
So we'll move to our presentations and recognitions.
But Domingo will need to, um, we'll have to do a roll call vote for all votes, so she will need to call the roll.
Oh, okay, yes. Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Member Reed. Yes. Jackson.
Yes.
Lanu.
Yes.
Okay, so let's proceed to, uh, presentations and recognitions. Calhoun County Land Bank updated Krista Trout Edwards. Six eight nine five three CCLB A brochure, final 2017, DTL one page information sheet, and TCP one page information sheet.
Good evening, everyone. I am Krista Trout Edwards, the Director of the Calvin County Land Bank Authority. And, um, I was asked to give a presentation tonight. I know there were some questions that came up. I think it was back in December before the holidays. Um, I have prepared a short PowerPoint because I knew that there were some new members and not everyone is familiar with what the land bank does. So if I can share my screen, I can go through that. And then if you have some specific questions for us, I'd be happy to answer those.
Krista, you should have the capability to go, um, to share your screen.
Hi. Can you see the PowerPoint?
No.
Okay.
Just one second.
Yeah, I got it. I think it's me. Can you see it now? Should say that it should have the logo on it. Okay. Thank you.
It just shows up a little weird on my screen, so bear with me for one minute. All right, here we go. So as I said, I'm going to provide a quick overview of the land bank authority, talk a little bit about the properties that we own, how we manage our program. And the specific question that came back to me was how do folks buy property from the land bank authority? So I'll answer that towards the end. I just wanted to provide some context for folks. We are a countywide authority. We're separate from Calvin County, but we work very closely with the county treasurer, uh, who is Brian Winsar. He's also on the meeting in the audience and he serves as our board chair. Um, our attitude is that we have one board, which is separate from the County Board of Commissioners, but that we serve many because we work so closely with the municipalities, especially Battle Creek and Albion, and to some extent, um, some of the townships and the city of Marshall. But really what we're doing is we're maintaining a challenging inventory of vacant and abandoned properties. So we do that, do a number of programs, um, we write a lot of grants, and we really work closely as a side with municipalities. And what we're trying to do is return those properties to the tax roll and then to activate some of our challenged properties. We may not be able to put them back on the tax roll right away, but we might be able to do an interim use that, um, adds some assets to the community in which that property is located. So right now we own just under 900 properties. As you can see, the vast majority are in the city of Battle Creek with 642. We have about 138 in the city of Albion, and then the rest are spread throughout the townships with Emmett coming in at, at the third highest with 46. And then, um, the other townships in Marshall and Springfield where we have fewer properties. Most of our properties come to us at the end of the property tax foreclosure process, so if property taxes go unpaid for three years, the county treasurer would foreclose on those properties and then try and auction them, and then whatever's left over at the end comes to us. At this point, most of our properties are residential vacant lots, so we have 782 of those, give or take. We have 32 that have houses on them still, give or take, because we, we are still doing some demos at the end of the year. And then we have a smaller number of commercial properties and industrial properties. It will say, um, some of our biggest properties in the city of Albion are post-industrial properties, and they are very challenging, and I'll talk a little bit about those this evening. So how do we manage this inventory? Well, one of the things that we do is we write a lot of grants. And this is just a table that shows the grants that we've brought into the city of Albion over the past six years. So we started with some funding to do some single-family residential demolition. And then that's, and we actually just ended with some of that funding as well, but we brought in some funding to do some post-industrial and post-commercial demolitions, and we've done a target market analysis in the downtown. And one of the biggest things that we've been able to do the last couple of years is we've had, um, an EPA grant that allows us to do brownfield assessments, and we've used that in the city quite a bit. We did 12 projects with our first EPA grant. That one is ending right now, and we have another grant that we just started with the EPA. So it was 600,000 for the first grant, 600,000 for the second grant, which gives us this 1.2 million, and that's a countywide grant. The land bank is the grantee, but our coalition is the city of Albion and the city of Battle Creek. And this slide just shows, um, our non-scale, or I'm sorry, our large-scale non-residential properties, um, that we've done a lot of work on. So we have six projects on here. Four of them have been in the city of Albion. The most recent was the demolition of the Union Steel Building, which we had just finished. We still have to seed it, but we just finished the demolition and, and restoring, and we will seed that property this spring. It just was too late in the year for us to, put seed down in the winter, it just wouldn't grow. So specifically, when we dispose of properties, we have sort of two tiers. We have, um, these programs here, which are about leasing and maintaining properties, and then we have the in-transfer program. So these right here, these are temporary typically. Folks can adopt a lot from us. They can lease and, and do a garden. And we have a neighborhood mow and maintenance program where folks sign up to mow 20 properties throughout the summer, and we pay them a stipend. And this has been really popular, and it's run in Albion for several years, but we were not able to do it last year because of the pandemic. So that was, um, that was not great, but we had to keep people safe. And then quiet title, that's really a legal service. If, um, a property does not have clear title, they can run it through a quiet title program, and we can cleanse that title for them, and that makes, um, a property more usable. So why do we, you know, why would we adopt and why would we leave? Well, it's really about activating vacant spaces and, and we can do some of these programs and projects with folks in the community, and it helps build, build public spaces in their community. So this one at the top is the Albion Community Gardens. This started out as a land lease from us, and they purchased most of those properties. They set up a nonprofit. It's been incredibly successful and amazing, and you know, when we get property in that area, they usually contact us and they just keep growing. So it's been, they've been a great group to work with. Some organizations, they just want to own, I mean, they want to adopt the property next to them just so they can do a beautification, just something small that they just keep up every year. So this is the Polish National Alliance in the city of Battle Creek, right across from the post factory. As you can see, we had quite a mess on our hands. Uh, we had to demolish a structure that was collapsing. Then the Polish National Alliance took it over. They put in this little garden. Every year they add something to it, and they usually do like a chili cook-off there, but they just adopt it each year, beautify it, they don't want to own it. So these are some good examples of activating vacant spaces. Programs that we run to actually transfer properties fall into four categories. The first is the side lot. It's pretty well-known, if you have a vacant lot that's owned by the land bank next to your house, there's an opportunity to purchase it as a side lot unless there's something special going on with that property. Transform This Home is where folks purchase, um, a house from us, and they have to have a rehab plan, and they rehabilitate it for a living, and then transform this commercial property is kind of the same concept. Purchase a commercial site from us, rehabilitate it, and get it back on the tax roll. DTL is very new. It's developed this lot, and we've actually just passed that through our board, and we're getting ready to roll it out. So it's very new, and that's for folks who want to develop vacant land. So the main requirements right off the top for purchasing property from the land bank authority is that the first, the person must be in good standing with the code office. So if they come to us and they have a lot of code violations on their current properties, they can't purchase from us until they get those remedied. They also must be current on all of their taxes, so if they have outstanding taxes, they can't purchase from us. And then they must meet our program requirements. Sometimes folks have tax issues or code issues, and they'll adopt like a side lot from us and work to get that corrected, and then they'll purchase it, uh, you know, when they have all of their, um, problems solved. So if they do something like that, then the adoption fee that they pay through the adopt a lot program will go to the side lot pricing. So we just take it off whatever, um, the side lot price is. And as you can see, the next bullet, side lot pricing ranges from $200 to $700 plus recording fees, and that's a sliding scale based on size. It goes up to 18,000 square feet, 20,000 square feet, and then anything above that that doesn't quiet qualify as a side lot, is sold at fair market value. And that goes for vacant land, commercial buildings, industrial properties. We get, um, a broker opinion typically from a realtor that we've contracted with, and then sometimes if it's, um, a larger property, we will do an appraisal and get an appraisal for it, and that's what we'll list it at. So our properties like houses and commercial structures and things like that, they're listed on the MLS. Side lots are typically not, because they're just a $200 lot in most cases, but on our website, we have a properties tab, and then you click that tab, it goes down to available properties, and we are doing some work on this right now to add, transform this commercial property. We're actually revamping that part of it, and then to add, develop this lot. But this is what you would see. We don't have all of our properties here, because some of them have grant liens on them and other things that we have to be cognizant of, or we're finishing up projects on them, but this is typically where folks would go. But this is an example of a side lot program. We tore down the White House in the middle. The neighbor purchased it, um, and he built a garage and expanded his property. This is in the city of Battle Creek. Some folks, when they purchase side lots, they just want the extra yard. Other folks want to fence it in and do a garden. It's, we don't require you to do anything. This is just one where we had a gentleman who was very keen to get this property and was able to build a garage on it. Um, our transform this home, our first transform this home was actually in Albion at 1007 Chauncey, but another really prominent transform this home was at 712 North Superior Street. So our idea behind this program was sometimes we can go in and we can do a little bit to address the need of the house, but we can't do everything. So in this 712 North Superior, we put the roof on the house because it had a big hole in it, and we knew if we couldn't save it. If we couldn't get that roof replaced, we couldn't save the structure, and it's right when you come into downtown, we wanted to save that, that streetscape. So we did that. We didn't make a ton of money on the sale or, or anything, but somebody did buy it and they did rehab it, and it got back on the tax roll, and it's owner occupied, I believe, now. So that was, that's a great story. Um, and then we also work with agencies like Habitat for Humanity, Humanity. This is 1112 Turpenny. This came through the tax foreclosure process. We purchased it. Habitat for Humanity is in the middle of doing a rehab. They're looking for a veteran to put in that house, and so they're, I think they're still waiting to find a veteran match, at least the last time I spoke to them, but they've already done the outside. You can see the picture here in blue is when it was foreclosed upon. And then the picture in brown here is, is after they've done the exterior rehab. And in the interim, before we sold it to Habitat, um, the Americor Vista's actually came out to the property and did a huge cleanup here for us. So this property's been touched by a lot of groups, um, and it sometimes takes a lot of groups to get the property turned around. And this map here, it just shows where we've had, um, transform this home, or the green are projects that are completed, the blue are projects that are in process. And then the red, we have this one at 707 Prospect that we're getting ready to bid out to see how much it would cost to rehab it. The same with 111 Elm, and then this one up here is Turpenny. I just wanted to show you spatially where some of these projects are located in the city. Transform This Commercial Property is similar but different because these properties need so much more. I'm sure you all recognize the properties here. This is Austin School. This is downtown, um, the old tattoo parlor and a vacant, uh, store right here. This is the old Albion Manor, and then this is the Parker Labs building. So these take a lot more because we always have to do environmental assessments, and that's something that we've been able to do with our EPA grant. And we have also gotten appraisals on them, and we're looking to put some of them on the market. This one is on the market right now, and we get a lot of calls about it. We just haven't found the right buyer. And this one, we need to do some more work on. Um, in Austin School, we have one more demolition to do, um, nearby, and then we've got, um, this old Albion Manor, and we're just waiting to get our appraiser out there so we can get a cost on it and, and get it listed. It got interrupted by COVID. So a, a lot of this has gotten interrupted by COVID in the last year, but we're, we're still keeping on. Um, and so some of the things that we would ask folks for in a commercial property, we want to know what their plans are, who their project team is, do they really understand the cost? Um, and so we've tried to build programs that give folks the opportunity to really find out what they're getting into, talk to municipal staff, building officials to really understand. We had transform this commercial property. We've been using it for a while. We went and made some changes to it at the end of last year because we wanted to streamline it and make it a bit more user-friendly. And that's where the one pager came from that we provided to city council. Just quick, at a glance, this is kind of what you need to do. Um, develop this lot, as I said, that's very new. I did send you a one pager for that. It's not on our website yet. We're in the middle of building that out. And our board just approved that at the end of last year, and it's really look for folks looking, um, to do some sort of infill housing or infill development. And it's very similar to TCP. The other thing that we do that's kind of related to this is we do sometimes assemble land if we have a lot of parcels together that are really, um, close to downtown or in a good location. It makes sense to try and preserve those for infill housing, especially is one thing that we talk about a lot, is both Albion and Battle Creek and some of the other communities that we are working in, they have housing needs, so we want to make sure that we have someplace to put it. This is the develop this lot one pager, which we shared with you prior to this meeting. Um, and then this is just an example of land assembly. So right here is downtown in the Bone Theater, and everything in orange is something that we own. And so this is an area, this is just west of downtown. It's been a lot of demolition, and this is an area that in 2019, we did a lot of work with the city's planning commission. We looked at these properties, you know, how can you build here? What could you do? And that was a really great process, and when we went into 2020, I thought we were in a really great place, and then the pandemic hit, so everything got a little bit slowed down, but you know, we're still working on this, and we're, we're kind of back at it. And then this map here, just to kind of show you some of the other investment, everything that is a blue triangle is something that we've used our EPA grant money on to do some assessments. If it's purple, then that means we use the EPA money, and we also did a demolition. So this is the Union Steel Site. Uh, this down here, Anne, that's the old Dar Rumpel School. This is Albion Manor. So you can see a lot of that work is concentrated downtown, but by no means is it just downtown. So what did we do last year in the city? Um, we finished our Union Steel demolition. We were able to continue doing our environmental assessments, and that's important to us because it helps us position our properties for resale, especially like an Austin School or an Albion Manor or some of the buildings downtown. And then we also completed the installation of our Albion Community Foundation beautification lot. Took all year, but we got there at the end, and, um, we spent a little bit of work to do in 2021, but it's gonna be, one of them is just south of downtown, and it's a place-making spot. It's gonna have a T-ball statue in it, and so we're really excited that the community got super involved in that. And then, um, 2021, we're looking at doing some strategic planning on our end, increasing some of our properties that are listed, and put some of our lessons in small-scale development that we worked on with the city back in 2019 into action. And we are always looking to collaborate with the city and others on redevelopment strategies and infill housing strategies. And that's really it. Um, I know the, the question I got was about how do we sell properties? So I don't know if you have other questions or there's anything else you're curious about?
I would like.
Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
I would just like to see that map. Could I have, um, can you send her that map?
Yeah, I can send it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Which one?
The one that showed about your demolitions and your assets.
Okay.
Okay.
Krista, I wanted to thank you for those maps, seeing, um, the different, you had a few that showed the, the breadth of the city and, and where you've had a footprint was very, um, useful, so I wanted to thank you for that. I, I've gotten feedback, um, in some of the, the different, you know, roles that I've had, that it's been challenging to secure a, a property through the land bank. And I was curious from your end, what you would, because you mentioned streamlining, you know, the transform this commercial property and some of the updates that you've made. So I'm just curious if you can speak to some of the sticking points that you've found in terms of, you know, really getting this property back into the community and on the tax rolls.
I think the biggest sticking point that we've found is that they're heavy lifts, and a lot of their properties, it's not just, I need a little bit of money to rehab it. There's significant disinvestment that has happened at the sites before they come to the land bank authority, and it can be quite a heavy lift to get them back into a usable, usable place. We were happy when we got the EPA grant, because one of the biggest hurdles early on was doing the environmental assessments. Those can be very expensive. A phase one lot is, you know, $3,000, and then if there is um, something of concern, you have to go into a phase two and a BEA. So we've been able to use that, especially in the city of Battle Creek, as a way to incentivize downtown investment. We've had a lot of good projects, um, and we've been able to do some of that in the city of Albion as well, but not to quite the same degree. A lot of how we've used that grant in the city of Albion is looking at properties that we own that we needed to be demolished or needed to do something else with. Because we just didn't have a base of information. Um, so I think that that's, that's one of the big things, and for a long time, we struggled with how do we communicate that with folks? And we, we've had a couple of situations where we kind of got to the end of the process, and we were kind of at the altar, and you know, we weren't just, we were, we just didn't know each other that well. And so what we wanted to do was say, okay, this is what we're expecting. And we wanted to put it out there. This is what we're expecting. And so what we did is instead of asking for everything upfront, we've now are asking folks to come to an agreement on price, meet with us, and we will customize a due diligence list for them on a commercial or industrial property. So it's hard to create a one-size-fits-the-all. If you have a downtown two-story building, that's going to be different than a standalone commercial site, you know, in a township or something like that. It's just not going to be as much work for that standalone. So now we're trying to customize and just really make sure that folks understand what's going on in the property prior to purchasing it, because we don't want them to come back, and we don't want folks to, um, fail. You know, we want to set them up to get the properties back on the tax roll.
Thank you. That's, that's really helpful. And just so I can understand, when you're saying the heavy lift, um, I'm sure the cost is, is pretty high, and then I, I noticed that on the one pager that you provided, it says assembling a team, identifying your team. And I was curious if that's part of the, the customization of the due diligence is just understanding the various roles that might be needed, and if that's something that you work with folks on.
Yep, so our, the one pager is the simplified version of the application. The application gives much more detail, and I'm happy to share that with you as well. We're just trying to streamline so folks can look at it and not feel overwhelmed. So if you're doing a downtown building, you're probably going to have an architecture and engineer, but if you're doing a standard, like we're selling a standalone building that is east of Albion, and they don't need all of those, you know, all of those professionals, because it's just not that kind of project. So we really want to be able to customize the transform this home to what they're actually looking at doing.
Thank you. Thank you.
Got all the questions?
Krista, can you tell them about the program where if they buy a lot, they can also get a plan for building a home on it?
Yeah. So that's develop this lot. And that works really similarly to our other programs. You need to show us that you have a plan. That one requires city approval because we want folks to be thinking about how do they actually create, you know, this building? And so that's the one we just started and we're going to be rolling that out on our website. But we do have an application and if city council members are interested in seeing those full applications, I'm happy to share them with you. You know, the more we can get it out there, the better. But we're getting a lot of questions about lots for building and we just want to make sure that folks are serious about it and that they just want to buy it and sit on it and we don't want them to come back. So we're just really trying to vet that interest and make sure that they have a plan.
Councilman Clark.
So even if they do just want to buy and sit on it, don't put nothing on it, as long as they're paying taxes, taxes for it, why can't they buy it?
So if they have, if they're adjacent to it or something, they can buy it through the side lot program. But some of the properties, it makes sense. There's so much interest in infill housing that that's really what we're trying to help. And we understood that that was a goal of the city and maybe that goal has changed. I don't know. But we've been working with the city for quite a while on housing sites. And so that some, not all sites, but some sites, that's what we're looking for.
I'd just like to say you can find a higher working group of women and men than the land bank. They are constantly busy doing things and very productive in what they do.
Okay. If that's all, we will proceed. Krista, we thank you so much for all the information that you gave us. We appreciate you and I'm quite sure we'll be getting back with you. I know I will because I would like to see your application. So.
Yeah, we can absolutely share that and we're always available for questions if you have it, have any.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. So presentations and resignations, recognitions are closed. Like to open it up now for public hearing. Michigan Communities Development Block Grant, CDBG, fine funding for 1917 East Michigan Avenue. Resolution number 20201, a resolution to authorize the city manager interim, city manager or acting city manager as the authorized signature or grant documents for the 1917 East Michigan Avenue Master Site Development Plan Project.
Mayor Proton.
Generally with the public hearing, now that the public hearing is open, you would take public, see if the public has any comment on the public hearing. And then it would be closed, followed by any public comment from the council and then you would vote on the resolution.
So at this time, is there any public comments on the public hearing?
I'm not seeing anyone with their hand up, but Christine Bowman is here with us from the EDC to provide just to give an overview on what this grant application is for. Christine? Oh Christine, you're on mute.
There, now we're working. Sorry about that. Right. Well, good evening, Mayor Proton Jackson, City Manager Snyder and Council. Thank you for having me this evening. So I'll give you the background on this as Mayor, excuse me, as Manager Snyder said. In spring of 2020, the EDC wrote a grant application to Michigan Economic Development Corporation for their site readiness program. And we were put on hold due to the pandemic, as many other things, and found out late, late this summer, early fall that we had been awarded funding to have a master site development plan done for a parcel the EDC has owned since about 2005, which is 1917 East Michigan Avenue. Some of those of you that have been on council for some time or have been involved in some community development activities in the community may know that as the 425 property. Because the city does have a 425 agreement with Sheridan Township. If that property were to get developed, that city utilities and infrastructure would go out to that parcel. So we were able to apply for that grant, very excited about that. And then found out that the funds were not going to come directly from MEBC. They were going to be community development block grant funds. So once that happened, we had to ask the city if they would agree to be the grant recipient for that program. So we have, as I said, the city, the EDC has owned up, has had a land contract on that 40 acre parcel since about 2005. In the late 2000s, there were some efforts made, including some environmentals and surveys and different things done to try to market that property. And then of course, the, the great recession happened. We wanted to pick back up on looking at that as a spot to develop for industrial development in our community. As some of you may be aware, we are running out of available properties in the industrial park, which is an excellent problem to have. But we also need some additional room for industrial development, especially heavy industrial, which that parcel was rezoned as M2 in the recent rezoning. So being able to get these funds through the, through the Michigan Site Readiness Grant Program would set us up to do that. That master site development plan would help us determine what additional infrastructure would need to develop the property and what that development like, look like. It would certainly help us make that property more marketable. What we are seeing with site selection request in this last year is that businesses, large scale businesses, industrial businesses are looking for larger and larger property to, to build on larger acreage because of the nature of their business and the nature of what's happening with manufacturing buildings overall. So this will be very helpful to us to continue to market that property as well as to have an idea of if that property were to be developed in the future, what that would mean for infrastructure, what was needed, what our infrastructure could, could handle, the type and size of manufacturing activity that it can handle based on that. And also give us an idea, obviously for future planning and budgeting purposes, the city and the EDC. I'd be happy to take any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Christine. I have just one question and you might not even be able to ever speak to it, but I was curious why it shifted from MEBC to CDBG.
Well, it's, it's, it's still MEBC. It's just the pool of funds it's going to come from now is CDBG funds. They had a very large pool of applicants. And they wanted to be able to award as many grants as possible. So there were about 10 of us that ended up getting shifted into the CDBG funds in order for us to be able to, to move forward with the program.
Thank you.
Christine, my question for you is out there, as I was looking at it, is that lots or is that? The way I seen it, there was many, it was a few lots.
Well, if, on the map, there's a, the map that I provided, it's got a yellow border around it. That's a, that parcel that we're talking about, 1917 East Michigan Avenue is a 40 acre parcel. There are other parcels around it. So that may be what you're referencing there. But the particular parcel that we're talking about that the EDC owns is just a 40 acre parcel.
I was curious about that because I seen it not just on the paper that you gave me, but I've seen it in the, in color. So I was curious. Yes. Cause I can see it on the end.
And there are a group of parcels around that that have been marketed for development. So you may have seen a map that included all of those parcels denoted. So that's, that's exactly probably what you're referring to.
And, and that area is considered Albion. I'm, I'm asking that, but I know where it's located at.
Well, that's actually in Sheridan Township. And as I said in a little bit earlier, we do have a, the city has a 425 agreement with Sheridan Township in place to extend, to extend infrastructure out there. Now, one of the great things is, is that there was a project the city did a few years ago. And they actually had the forethought at that time to actually extend the water out a little bit further than they had planned. On the recommendation of the, the city engineer that would facilitate further development. So that is, that's a big bonus for this property because we don't have as far to go to get city water to the property and there's sewer connections on both sides of the road there, which will help ease the cost of that if it were to get developed in the future.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. Was there any other questions? Okay. Councilman Clark.
So is there any plans or are you guys looking at the Albion Street area where the Malibu was?
You know, Vicki, I would be, be happy to talk to you about that at a, at a, at another time. I know there's some properties that are identified on there, including some land bank properties that we would love to see redeveloped, but definitely have some environmental challenges. So you know, we're, we're, we're always looking at everything. This, this one just happens to be a perfect opportunity because we have control of the property, which is sometimes one of the challenges of getting these properties back on the tax rolls, hence why we need the land bank as an example of that. But we are, you know, we're always looking at, we're always looking at all of our parcels and having those in mind, the ones that need to be redeveloped. And obviously if something were to come to us, that was a site selection request that one of those properties on Albion Street there, like the Parker Labs would be a good fit for. We would certainly be sharing that information with the development or the realty community.
Okay. At this time, if there's no further questions. Christina Bowman, we would, we love what you brought to the table for us and thank you for the information. And we do know how to contact you if we need anything else. So thank you so much.
Thank you. And thank you for the, to the city for agreeing to be the grant recipient. Appreciate it.
Mayor Proton, you'll just need to close the public hearing and then ask for, the resolution will, can then be approved.
All right. So at this time, I want to close the public hearing. The public hearing is now closed. So at this time, if there are any, before we go any further, what we do need to do is we city clerk Jill, I need, I mean Domingo, I need you to take roll call again, please, because we did not state where we were at. Remember, we do not have to state the address, but we need to tell the city. So we need to do that before we proceed any further.
Councilmember Clark.
Albion Precinct 1.
Reed.
Councilman Reed, you on mute.
Then Reed, Precinct 2 Albion, Michigan.
Jackson.
Jackson, I'm sorry, Nora Jackson, Precinct 3 Albion, Michigan.
Lanu.
Here, reporting from Albion, Michigan and Calhoun County.
Ann Williamson.
Here, Precinct 6 on Burn Street in Albion.
Okay. At this time, we would like to, if there's any public comments?
We need to, we need to bring the resolution to the floor and vote on the resolution from the public hearing.
Okay. Okay. At this time, all that are in favor, say aye, I mean, say yes.
Oh, wait, wait. I'm sorry, Mayor Proton, there has to be a motion and a second before we vote on it.
I apologize. Thank you so much for clarifying that. At this time, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
All right. At this time.
No, Clerk Domingo will need to roll call.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Reed. Jackson.
Yes.
Lanu.
Yes.
Ann Williamson.
Yes.
Okay. So at this time, we will proceed with asking if there are any public comments?
There are none at this time.
So at this time, we will close public comments and take a motion to, we need to go into our closed session?
So moved.
Support.
Okay. So you need to take a roll call once again.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes, here.
Jackson.
Yes.
Lanu.
Yes.
Yes.
And Clark.
Yes.
Okay. At this time, we will go into our closed session and remember it is another link.
Everyone should have gotten a separate link for the closed session. We're missing Councilmember Clark and Councilmember Reed. Oh, there we go.
All right. We're going to get started. Okay, items for individual discussion. Can I have a motion?
You have to call the roll again.
Oh, that's right. Thank you. Appreciate that. Clerk Domingo, can you call roll, please?
Councilmember Clark.
Yeah.
Reed. Jackson.
Here.
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 Items for individual discussion. Can I have a motion to proceed?
I think we might have skipped over the consent calendar.
I said it in that, so I, I'll say it again.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep. When I say consent calendar, I did the other one too. You guys didn't hear me when I said that. That's where I should have been is at the, um, but I had already said something in the other meeting, so I'll stop that. You didn't hear me, did you, Councilman Williamson, when I did that? So a motion to um, a motion to, well, January fourth, twenty twenty-one, a regular session meeting. Um, can I have a motion to agree on that?
So moved.
Okay.
Support.
Hey, was there any changes or anything? None. Can I have a, a motion to um, support that?
I believe Councilmember Lanu did.
Okay, that was the second? Okay, all right. So roll call. Um, Clerk Domingo, please.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Lanu.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. So items for a individual discussion. Can I have a motion to discuss?
If you don't need a motion, you just need to, then you just move right into each individual item.
All right. Okay, so items for individual discussion. First reading and approving of the ordinance, ordinance twenty twenty-one oh one and ordinance amended chapter twenty-two to amend article five, sections twenty-two, two oh one, two, two, two twenty-two, two thirteen miracle, miracle, I mean, medical marijuana facilities.
So moved.
Or.
Mayor Pro Tim, if I may?
Yes, you may.
Okay, so um, as the council's aware, this is the uh, medical ordinance that we've had on, on the books for uh, a, a little while now. Um, there's been uh, some litigation across the state. Um, so one of the big changes that we've made is there's, there's basically a a growing movement in the courts about whether or not local municipalities can quote unquote license these facilities as opposed to give them um, land use permits. Realistically, I think it's a distinction without a difference, but in the, in an effort to avoid potential litigation, I've spoken to uh, you know, John Tracy, who's our, our planning director. Um, and basically, we're just reclassifying the licenses that we, we issue these facilities on the medical side as permits. Um, again, a distinction without a difference, but I think it'll probably keep us out of the litigation crosshairs. There are some other uh, modifications that we've made. One of the things that's been coming up more and more, an issue that um, the department heads and the clerk and I have been dealing with is um, I, a lot of these facilities, uh, I shouldn't say a lot, but several of these facilities are getting um, really lazy in, in how they put in their applications for renewal each year. By way of example, we just had a facility that, that submitted an application and uh, their documents were all two years outdated. Um, and so they're not, they weren't even bothering to update those documents. So um, one of the things that I've done is, is adding in that um, their affidavits can't be more than thirty days prior to the application. Things of that nature. Um, another change that we've made is one of the things we do is background checks. Rather than mandating that the Public Safety Department do the background checks, we're putting it on the applicants that they have to submit what's called iChat criminal history reports for each stakeholder, each managerial employee and each employee of the applicant. Those are the public criminal history records uh, that are available to the public, but we're making it, putting it on them to submit those and those can't be dated more than fourteen days prior to the submission of their application. Um, another change that we've made is uh, if, as the council's aware, we updated our zoning not too long ago, and so the ordinance actually referenced the um, prior zoning districts. Those have since changed. Uh, so we've updated those to reflect the new what I'll refer to as consolidated zoning districts. And that's basically it. Substantively, the ordinance hasn't changed much, uh, but we wanted to make those corrections, one to address the increasing deficiencies that we're seeing with these facilities, update the zoning and try to keep us out of the litigation crosshairs as it relates to the licensing versus permit issue. Um, as it relates to the facilities that currently have licenses, those will continue until they're up for renewal, at which time those will switch to permits. Any questions? Okay.
All right. So a motion to move. Motion to approve.
You just, point of information, you just have to call the roll now.
All right, City Domingo, I mean Clerk Domingo, please, can you call roll?
Councilmember Lanu.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tom Jackson.
Yes. Okay, so we're just moving. We keep moving, correct? Okay, so the next um, we will be discussing is approval resolution of twenty twenty-one oh two to approve ballot language to renew, renew the levy of two mills for three years to raise dedicated funding of a hundred and eighty-five thousand and six hundred per year for the continued operation of the recreation programs of the city of Albion.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tim, if I can add, um, this resolution is just to adopt ballot language to renew our current recreation mileage. Um, it is a three-year, um, three-year mileage and um, this just needs to be turned into the county by February now if we are going to hold this during the May election. Answer any questions if you have any.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Is there a group in the community that's going to be uh, working to advocate for this mileage?
Um, I have, I've talked with um, Harry Banner a little bit. Yes, they are, he is working, we're working to form a group, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay. Motion?
No, no, Clark Domingo just needs to, yeah.
Roll call, because you already, okay. City Clerk Domingo, can you do roll call, please?
Councilmember Lanu.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
And Mayor Proton, Jackson.
Yes. Okay, to approve Enterprise Fleet Management Program.
So moved.
Support.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Proton Jackson. I will ask Public Services Director Patrick Miller to provide an overview on this program. Director Miller?
Thank you, Haley. Good evening, everyone. Patrick Miller, the Director of Public Services. As you know, the DPW's vehicles, the pickup trucks vehicles, they're pretty old and not in good repair. Our newest vehicle we have is a 2010. These vehicles, you know, they start nickel and diming us. They have suspension problems, driveline problems. We've actually had a lot of brake failure. You know, the maintenance cost is pretty substantial on these vehicles. So, the last several weeks, I've been working with Enterprise Fleet Management to kind of come up with a program that would suit the city and our needs in the DPW. We have about 17 vehicles that we use all year long. 10 of those we use quite often. So, in looking at this, we're going to pick out 10 vehicles to replace in this program. This program will do five vehicles one year, five vehicles the next year, and then the third year, we will buy five more vehicles and sell the first five. The way this program works, the city gets a very good price on purchasing vehicles. So, we're going to be able to get a three-quarter ton four-wheel drive truck for like $32,000. And we're going to use this truck for a couple of years, and then we're going to resell it, and we're going to recoup the cost, because we're going to sell it for actual market value, not our pricing, like the state pricing. So, the way Enterprise does this throughout a lot of different municipalities, so, you know, they have tons of experience in managing this type of program. And they've taken a look at our numbers, our maintenance, and our fuel costs, and you'll see inserted here into the packet, a pretty large document, but in that document, it kind of shows if we were to buy a vehicle like every two years, basically, our budget would come out to like $42,000 per year. And that might even be a little lower, with our maintenance cost is pretty high in our current fleet. They can get that down to about 30, and that's with 10 two-year-old or less vehicles. So, really, we're going to come out ahead over 10 years. They predict us to savings of over $100,000 with 10 new vehicles. They provide a lot of help with managing this fleet. You know, they pick out the vehicles that they hold their value the best. That way, when we go to resell them, we're making our money back. That's how this program really works. So, yeah, you know, this year, we kind of picked out five three-quarter ton four-wheel drive trucks. Three of them will have snow plows. The other two will be plow capable. We'll get one in the Parks Department, one in the Cemetery Department, one in the Street Department, and then the other two will be utilities. Yeah. Basically, that's it. You guys know that our trucks are looking pretty rough. They're really just, they're behind times, and it's, they're not, they're not performing the way they should. And this is a kind of a lease program. There isn't the typical, you know, there's no problem with us stickering these or lettering these. There's no, you know, if they get scratched, there's no penalty there. They're our trucks. They just kind of facilitate all this. So, I guess I can open it up to questions from you guys.
Patrick.
Yeah.
I'd just like to say thank you, because I watch, when I go to other cities, and I see where Marshall trucks are in Albion, and they keep, they have nice trucks. And I always wondered why we could not have our people driving around in nice trucks, too. Thank you for looking after that, because it's going to make Albion look a lot better. And it's good for you guys, too.
Absolutely.
Councilman Clark.
Yes, I wanted to say thank you also for that, and also ask the question about the vehicles that you have on the lot that aren't running. What is the process of what you plan going forward with those?
Yeah, so actually, Enterprise can help facilitate the sale of those. Historically, we've done kind of like an employee auction, and if they don't sell through the employees, then we kind of look to an online auction. I'm thinking a lot of these trucks, they're almost scrap, some of them, but we'll try to get the best we can through Enterprise and hopefully recoup some of that cost. You actually see that, if you look through the packet, they predict, you know, we'll get like $7,000 out of the first sale, and then maybe like $13,000 out of the next sale of our old trucks. And then, once we start selling these newer trucks, obviously, we'll recoup a lot more, like $50,000.
So, when you were saying out of the 13, seven, is that correct? When you gave the number of how many you actually have that are still running compared to the ones, you were including those that were there?
Yeah, so, we have about 17 that we utilize all year long. Of that 17, 10 of them really get utilized heavily. So, what I would like to see happen with this program is, once we get these new 10 trucks, we will take those other 10 that we utilize heavily and put them towards the really bad other seven trucks out of the 17. And those trucks really just need to go somewhere else. They don't belong being driven by any of our people. They're just in poor, such poor condition.
So, you're talking about ones that drive that you, I'm talking, I'm speaking about the ones that's on the fence that I haven't moved in a long time. Were they included in that number?
No, no, those weren't included in the 17.
I didn't think so. So, how many do you actually have out there?
I think, including the trucks on the fence.
Yes.
I would say there's probably 10 more. I actually have that number, too.
Councilmember Clark, our plan by, with moving to this program, we are looking to get rid of all of that old equipment that is just sitting and not being used. So, we do have an auction or bid policy in place to where we offer it to current employees first to submit a bid on any old equipment, and if no one successfully submits a bid, then we can work with Enterprise to move forward with selling and getting rid of that junk equipment that we have.
Okay, I still would like the answer to my question about how many of those were out there.
I have seven trucks on my auction list right now, the fence trucks.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Go ahead, Councilman Lanu.
Thank you, Mayor Proton, and thank you, Patrick, Director Miller. Definitely excited to know this is happening, and you mentioned the lettering, and so I just wanted to, I know Manager Snyder has the branding on her radar, but I just wanted to plant that seed to make sure our new, our city's new branding is also going to be part of the new trucks, the new fleet.
Yeah, absolutely.
Awesome. That was all.
Okay. Is, will that be all the questions, everybody? Okay. All right, so we just need to do a roll call?
Councilmember Williamson.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
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 And Mayor Proton, Jackson.
Yes. Okay, so we're going to go to D, approved resolution 2021-03, a resolution to approve an amendment to schedule of fees to include donation bin fees.
So moved.
Support.
Mayor Proton, if I may?
Yes, you may.
So, back, ordinance 2019-10 was passed, which kind of regulates donation bins within our community. A part of that ordinance council needs to set a fee that goes along with that application. As you all are aware, the donation bins have become quite an issue in our community. We have several up in the old Burger King parking lot along, as well as along the car wash area. We have, they're a pain. Our code enforcement department, there is a number listed on these bins. We have reached out and called the number several times. It's almost impossible to reach someone. So, trying to contact someone to come and ask that they remove this waste, it's been an ongoing issue for the city. So, we are proposing a $250 fee to go along with this application with the hopes of, if someone is really serious about having these donation bins in the community, they will do their due diligence to make sure that they are being properly utilized and not turning into just a large dumping site. So, we are recommending the $250 fee for this application. And I will happy to answer any questions. Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
So, I was wondering, because the one up on Eaton Street is, just looks a total mess, and if we could also look into if the businesses have cameras around there, so we could, because they're not supposed to, from what I understand, leave mattresses and thing of that, those, that nature, anyway. Maybe if we could start utilizing the cameras around those businesses, so maybe we could maybe find some of the people that are doing that?
Yep.
And maybe get some correction done like that.
I think, yes, that's a, we can definitely do that, but I also, just holding the businesses or organizations accountable who are placing these bins within our community, because we have reached out, you called the number that they have listed, and we're just, we're not able to contact someone, so I think by hopefully having a nice fee will hold these organizations accountable on doing their due diligence, on making sure that they are properly emptied and maintained.
At that, also, are you able to put some kind of regulation on them? How often they should pick that up, too, at the same time?
That, I don't know if that is addressed within the ordinance, but I can review that to see if that could be added, or if that's something that's already included. City Attorney, I'm not sure if.
I believe it is included. I believe, we have language in there that basically says it can't become, for lack of better, I don't have it in front of me, but it basically says it can't become a dumping site. It can't, they have, it has to be well-maintained, and if they don't, we can, we can remove them.
Council, Councilman Lanu.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. I'm curious, within the application, if we know where these business owners are based out of, and if that information might help ensure that they are emptying the bins. And then, I'm also wondering if the ordinance language can ensure that the contact information that is provided is accurate, and we can reach them, so that if there is an issue with needing a pickup, that we can actually contact them and reach them.
Yeah, by having a formal application and with fee, that information will be obviously included on the application form. So, we will, moving forward, we will collect that information from any organization that wishes to have a bin within our community.
Thank you.
Councilman Williamson.
I completely agree with this fee, because multiple sites have just turned into dumping grounds within the city. My concern is on the, I live kind of, I live in six where Clark Street, one side is city, one side is not, in a certain portion, kind of where like the laundromat and Young's Pharmacy is, and they seem to always have a couple of bins that turn into a dumping site. Is there anything that we can do to talk to the township there about policing that a little bit better, because that, I know it's not within our jurisdiction, but is there something we can do to send a message to ask them to take care of that? I mean, we're clearly taking action in our own city to do it. I'm wondering, is there anything we can do to ask them to take care of theirs, because it's, it just spills out into the street over here?
Absolutely. I'll be happy to reach out to Dick Porter, I believe, as shared in Township Supervisor, to discuss.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay. All right, Clark Domingo, can you take roll, please?
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Reed.
Yeah.
Lanu.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
And Mayor Proton, Jackson.
Yes. Okay. At this time, we'll move into discussion of Barnes Park.
Yes, Mayor Proton, am I believed you asked to have this on the agenda at last meeting? I don't know if you wish to share anything before we kick off this discussion?
What I would love to discuss is, I was very proud of City of Albion. They went out there and taped up everything, and that was justice, because there was a couple people that, you know, brought it to my attention. And I do believe that that is the first start. And we did have one of the senators, or I think that was, not the senator, but I think one of the county individuals, that they would also check on this, and you have continued to check on this. So, I thank you for the expedience on this, on this matter. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. You're welcome, and I would, yes, like to give thanks to our Department of Public Services for quickly taking action on this. When speaking to both Director Miller and Director Tracy, this has been an ongoing issue within our community. We are aware that we, that area needs some serious repairs. Unfortunately, our staff within the DPW, we don't have the proper equipment and tools to get down in the river to properly repair the dock to to make it safe, but we can remove it until we are able to bring a contractor in or someone else who has the equipment to rebuild or properly secure the dock within that, within that space. So, until then, we have roped and secured it off, so no one is able to access that areas, but we, it is on our list of priorities and on our radar to, to take action to properly address that.
Appreciate you. Thank you so much. So, if any, not anymore, if there's any more questions, if not, we'll move on to F, rental certification update?
Yes, that was me, and Councilman Williamson, myself, Mr. Tracy, and Darwin at the time was meeting, then we had COVID, and it slowed down. And there were some things that we had discussed, one being that one, hi, Mr. Tracy. One of the things being that we wanted to know what the, how many actually homeowners we had in the city, and people that were landlords or currently have possession of rental properties. And another thing, I would like to see if we could get any more information about is, how many people that own these property actually live in the city? You know, because I'm thinking of Councilman Reed, when she was having a problem with the house across the street from her. You know, we found out that this landlord was miles away and wasn't taking care of the property anyway. So, if we needed to maybe make some amendments to some of the orders or things in the future, so we wouldn't have such a problem as she did have with that one. So, now wait for you, Mr. Tracy.
Okay. All right, so, I, that's an awesome information for your packets. Everyone should have a rental, City of Albion residential rentals list, which is basically was done in 2020. Excuse me, it hasn't been recently updated primarily because of COVID. Excuse me, it hasn't been recently updated primarily because of COVID. And, um, a number of issues that go along with COVID and what can be done, what can't be done. But in two thousand twenty, uh, we did as, as accurate as possible by using information from the city assessor's office on, uh, what is, uh, hundred percent home, homeowner occupied? And those that are not, uh, we went through permits and permitted information, uh, water billing, uh, state of Michigan, through one of their departments there. And primarily what we came up with is one thousand three hundred and fifty-two rental units in the City of Albion. Uh, if you look at the sheet that was supplied to, uh, you'll see that it breaks it down. Single family, uh, units, two, uh, two-unit dwellings and so on and so forth. This does not include any of the college dorms. Okay, this is besides what the college has.
Okay.
In doing the research at the time, uh, within the city limits, there were a hundred and ninety-five, uh, individuals that owned properties, uh, that lived in the city limits. Uh, outside of the city limits, within the Albion mailing district, there were another hundred and sixty-four individuals. Uh, of course, Albion mailing district includes a number of the townships, uh, Albion Township, Sheridan Township, and going out towards, uh, almost Duck Lake and such. Outside of the mailing district, within the state of Michigan, there were two hundred and fifty-six of the owners, uh, said properties, and out of state, we found sixty-six that were completely out of state. Quite often, we run across, um, in, in buildings and such, uh, whether it be rental or in the case where you have people are, that are purchasing by, uh, on a land contract, and that we find a lot of those, uh, quite often. And, and the one that was mentioned earlier, that you mentioned about, uh, across from causal person reads, uh, that, that company there that, um, was selling that on a land contract was out of Miami in Florida. So, uh, and that's where some of runs into problems, where you have also the individuals, whether it's the rental or selling property that you're flipping, um, quite a distance away. And, and quite often will, uh, change names and create another corporation, and you wind up having to track, track them down, uh, two and three deep. So, um, as far as non-taxable residential units, uh, towards the bottom of the page, you'll see where, uh, we have, um, uh, a number of them that are spread out with these, the, um, Albion Housing Commission, and also with Maple Grove. So it gives you a pretty decent breakdown. Like I say, it's not current to date, uh, primarily because of the COVID, uh, yeah, restrictions that we've faced, uh, with COVID and even, uh, appears that probably we may wind up looking at, uh, evictions or non-eviction, uh, through September, uh, with the new regulations that may go into effect as President Biden takes office. So I did put a couple examples in there of some of those things that have happened over a period of years. One of the papers there, you'll see is a, um, basically a seven and a half block area off of, uh, North Superior Street to the east. And it's just kind of, it gives you a little bit of an idea of what's happened over the last twenty years, uh, in, in this area. And this is kind of representative of a number of areas where we've had homeowner occupied, uh, that have been, uh, sold in or decided to rent those out. The red dotted ones, of course, are rental properties, there's twenty-four of them. Uh, now there's, uh, twenty-five owner occupied at this time. Vacant buildings, dwellings, uh, there's four of them. Vacant lots with dwellings that were demolished by Calhoun County Land Bank, five. And then a couple, um, vacant dwellings themselves that are still standing on by Calhoun County Land Bank. And so it gives you a little bit of an idea of what has happened in, in certain areas and, uh, tends to, um, change quite a bit. Uh, of course, you have the Union Steel, former Union Steel, uh, building that has been demoed within that, uh, several blocks, and then the former site for J and M Plating. So, uh, but it does, it, it does give you an idea of what's been happening in a number of areas within the city. I also included most common violations identified. And this is in rentals and bottom line, even in, this can be found in a home, uh, owner occupied homes too. So, uh, I won't take the time to go down through that list. Right now, there's a number of items, it's, it's all there for you. And one of the things I had run off is a, um, example of various residential and accessory and commercial buildings that, uh, were occupied, uh, rentals and such. And if you look down through the pages there, it gives you an idea of what we have, both rental plus owner occupied, uh, within the city. We, we definitely have a number of homes that are vacant, um, that have either had to be boarded up or are boarded up. As you go through the list in there, you'll see a few homes that have been, uh, vacant for a number of years for various reasons. There's, you know, and there again, some of them are, were owner occupied at one time, and others, uh, are rentals, uh, that are no longer occupied because of the conditions. So, uh, what are problems we do find too is, uh, the city faces a, a number of problems. When you have, uh, structural fires, whether it be commercial or residential, owner occupied or rental, we do run across that where structures have not been fired, you not have fire insurance on them. So winds up where properties typically are let go back on, um, taxes. And then it's the, the, um, your, your public that pays their taxes and to take care of that property and demo and, um, remove or raise, prep, raise the, um, structures. Uh, you might really want to look at, uh, some programs that are used in a few other cities, including Three Rivers, that, how they address that. But as you go towards the back, you'll even find there's some downtown structures in there that are, are owned by the land bank and, um, so on. So you've, you've got quite a mix. And I, and I try to make, you know, show what's across the board. So it's just not rental properties, but also owner occupied and or commercial.
Go ahead, Shane, you go first. Don't mute.
I, I fixed it, I fixed it, don't worry. I was trying to prevent someone from saying you're on mute.
Yeah, exactly.
I cannot wait for that phrase to die at the end of twenty twenty-one, okay? Um, so this is, this is, this is a good amount of information. This is exactly, I, I want to point out that this is good governance in motion. Like, this is council partnering with, um, the city to try to, um, find out what the actual problem is. And so what, so what you can take from the data that's in this packet is we have a ton of rental units. So, um, for example, when we go back and we talk about rental certification again, we actually have some data milestones to talk to landlords about. Nope, actually, we have thirteen hundred plus rental units in this community. And then we actually have the number that are, you know, vacant, the number that are not up to code, things like that. And so this is helping to build a bridge to a comprehensive rental certification policy that makes sense for our community. So thank you, Director Tracy, thank you, Intern Manager Snyder. Uh, this, this is, I'm just so happy that, uh, it takes a while, but government always does, um, but we got to this information. Now, I have one question, because now it's, um, now the other, the flip side of this coin, that when we're talking with landlords and other investors in the community is, what is the enforcement and how on landlords? Right, there are a few landlords who are making everybody look bad. Uh, I tend to agree with that argument until I'm proven wrong. What is our biggest barrier to enforcement of code and getting the, the landlords to fix their properties and get them in line with what is already the written code for the city? Um, what's our biggest barrier? That's what I want to know. Is it money? Is it manpower? What is it?
Well, excuse me, money, I, I guess in reality, money is the biggest challenge, uh, for one. Uh, without money, you, you, you're basically down the manpower you need to be able to address everything that needs to be addressed. Uh, not saying that you have to have a dozen people, but definitely if you had one or two more staff, uh, working be, between zoning, building, code enforcement, uh, that would greatly increase what can be done. But there again, money is, money is a, a, a number one item, because, uh, as you can even ask, um, Attorney Call, uh, Attorney Harkness, uh, no, we can, we can go after properties. Uh, we quite often have wind up with properties that, uh, go to court. And if, when we get a property that somebody's just trying to dump off or not take care of, even, uh, and, and we wind up getting demolition, uh, judgment for demolition, you have to have the money to take those properties down. And or if you're going to rehab a property, um, you have to have the money. Uh, that's, that's a key thing. In all reality, uh, one of the former city managers asked me on a wish list what I would wish for. And to be honest with you, I told him right off bat, a quarter million, a dot, quarter million dollars a year for ten years. And, and that's not being, um, not being far-fetched at all to bring properties into compliance. Uh, if the city were to be real aggressive and, and, you know, be able to follow up on court orders and such, that's, that's a reality. Uh, you have properties that have to be demolished. Hopefully, hopefully you can get the properties before they get to the point where they, they are no longer, um, feasible for the money spent on them. But, uh, you need the money to start with. And there's, there are some programs, I know that, um, uh, Intern City Manager, uh, Snyder and, um, uh, Jesse, uh, the assistant, had talked with, uh, myself and, and, um, Glenn Lindsay from Safe Belt, uh, about some of the programs in other cities. And Three Rivers is a good example, and you might, you might want to look a little bit more into that. With Three Rivers, we had, uh, looked in, looked into it and quite in depth several years ago. Of course, every time we turn around, something's put on the side or, or shut down. So, uh, and wanted to deal with rental and or homes. But, uh, Three Rivers has had a rental certification program for a number of years now. And they also have, uh, some rehab that happens with vacant, uh, structures and or, uh, rental structures, where the money that comes off of the, um, part of the rental regis, registration money. So, uh, you know, in all real, I mean, in all honesty, if you, if everybody was on board and went for rental certification, plus the rehab of owner occupied, uh, there's a lot that can be done, but everybody has to be on board. It can't just be one or two. It's, it, the, the whole council needs to back it. And, um, there's quite a bit that could be done. So, but primarily, primarily, uh, the first thing right offhand is money.
Again, thank you, John, for all this, um, for this report. This is excellent. I do have a, a question, um, because we have all the abandoned, um, houses and buildings. If we wanted to change some of the language in how our current code to reflect this, what's the time period that you think would be, um, more feasible to, for the city to step in? When somebody, for instance, is not, there's no running water, and there's no lights, and there's no gas on, in the property, so you know it's not being occupied?
Well, be, to, to begin with, before COVID, uh, came into play this year, in the, in the case where a rental or even owner occupied, uh, was discovered to have no water, uh, running water, uh, no gas, uh, for heat in the wintertime and such. Typically, those would be posted with a short period of time, uh, within, basically within a week. Or it either to be brought back to where you have, uh, potable water running, uh, sewer that's, uh, usable, uh, heat. Or, uh, if it wasn't, then it was, would be posted on for occupancy. And basically, the individuals would be required to move. So, um.
So what about when it's a landlord? Because I have several in, in my area where, um, the landlords just aren't moving anyone in, and the property is just sitting.
You mean as far as vacant?
Yep.
Properties and such?
Yep.
Uh, there again, I mean, we have a number of properties that wind up written up. The thing of it is, is when a property is vacant, uh, it winds up too often being on the back burner. There again, the, the funds to address it, uh, and quite often, they'll wind up sitting vacant until they go back on, uh, tax foreclosure. And then you wind up with a cycle where you have some of the properties that go around and around. Uh, I must say, the land bank, uh, has done a good job of trying to eliminate a lot of that. At one time, you might see a house go through, uh, tax foreclosure three and four times, where people would pick them up for a hundred bucks, two hundred bucks, throw them on, uh, the, the web, trying to make a quick buck. Uh, and if they didn't make it, uh, they only had a hundred or two hundred bucks involved with it. They start getting hit with fines, they just let it go back to, uh, tax foreclosure again. So there's, there's different things that are involved with it. The Calhoun County Land Bank, yes, Chris Edwards had talked earlier. Uh, they've have a few different things, excuse me, that they've been doing and are doing to try to, uh, move forward. And it's primarily what the land bank was, uh, created for in the state of Michigan is to, uh, take properties, improve them, sell them, and then take that money and reinvest it in the communities to, uh, red blight and, and bring the housing stock and, and, uh, properties up. So, uh, but, um, yeah, so it kind of answered.
Yeah, um, Attorney Harkness?
Yes.
So is, is, can you follow up or get us some type of information to see if there's anything that we could change, um, for the city itself? So it, because it seems like to me it's a longer process than it needs to be. Um, because I watched this house right here on the corner of Austin and, and Street, I think it is. I remember when it was vacated, and now I've watched it. And when they moved in, they did a whole lot of work to it to bring it up. And now I've watched it totally just fall apart during that period of time. So is there, you know, if you, could you find out if there's any way that we could do something differently? Through the city about vacant buildings, um, or put a different type of code ordinance in place or something? Or vacancies when they, when we know that there's no one, running water, gas, or lights in there? And, and the building itself is, and nobody's staying there. If, if we could take possession of that, if anybody else is doing it, where you can take possession of that sooner? That's what I'm asking.
Well, I mean, I can tell you that other municipalities have, uh, what, what are called vacant property ordinances, where they basically say, you know, if a, if a property is, is not occupied by any individual and maybe doesn't have utility service after a certain period of time, the owner is required to board up, uh, the, uh, you know, doors and windows, uh, to prevent, um, deterioration and damage and break-ins and things of that nature. So we could probably do, do something similar, but, um, we are somewhat limited, but I think there are little things like that that we probably could do that might help to curb some of the issues that we're having.
Yeah, and and on that, definitely, if you were able to or move forward with having a abandoned or vacant home registration, would probably, it would help out, definitely.
So I'll I'll find some ordinances from other municipalities and bring them to, send them, send them in for a discussion at a future council meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Reed and then Williamson F. Matt.
I was wondering the same thing, because when I was looking around precinct two, there's 22 vacant houses that no one's living in. And and I I know some of them, like the the parents died and the the children had their own houses and things, so they just never bothered about really taking care of it. And and those kinds of houses are the ones that are now deteriorating and 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 falling apart and everything. And then on North Anne Street, three houses up, as you turn off Chestnut on North Anne, sitting back behind the house, there's a house that's got trees growing through it and everything. It it should have been torn down like years ago. And it's and it's still sitting there. What do you do about things like that?
If I may respond to that, that house back there has been vacant for at least probably sixteen, eighteen years.
Yeah.
That also belongs to the land bank. Okay.
Okay.
Unfortunately, we do have several houses around the city, which is it's kind of amazing that have been vacant for years and years. Marifactor's one on on Erie Street, that's been vacant at least twenty-two years, was vacant when I started with the city. And evidently, the taxes are paid on it every year, and it's been boarded for years. But so so we run across properties of that nature. There again, it's it's a thing of, you know, we can get court orders to demo and such, but we we need to find a way to recover the cost on that.
Yeah, because I was just wondering, because you, that's where you get a lot of of animals, like ground hogs and 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 all kinds of things like that. And then they mess up your whole neighborhood.
I agree.
Councilman William.
So I think, I think what's really important is that this is the point in the conversation where some places would say, thank you for the data and do nothing with it. But I think, thinking long term, I think at one of our next meetings, we maybe need to think about how we can use this data, the information that it gives us to then shape what our policy is going to be moving forward around rental units and how we start to take care of blighted property. Noticing that so much of our blighted property is rental in nature. So how, you know, you know, that it's not for tonight. But I think if we can all think about it and come back to the table again and say, you know, okay, rental certification committee, let's reconstitute that committee. Let's pick up that data and see what this tells us. It may be that we need to look at how we would do a fee structure. Maybe we need to look at the Three Rivers version where they do a fee once a year that then goes into taking care of blighted properties. May maybe it is what we've brought up already, but I think that now that we're better informed, we can start to move through this process and bringing the landlords back to the table and talk thoughtfully about how we do this, because just as one landlord can ruin it for many others, blighted property can ruin it for the rest of this community. The more vacant, abandoned, torn up homes that are across this community, the lower the property values are for everyone else, including other landlords. So I think this is a really great start. Thank you again to John Tracy and interim city manager Snyder. This is going to put us off to a good start to have a really positive, thoughtful conversation with the community, with the landlords about how we address this issue moving forward. So I appreciate all the hard work. I I feel way more informed now than I did a year ago, and I appreciate that. So thank you.
If I may just say real quickly, as mentioned before about Three Rivers and such, that they're they're similar in size, or similar with the number of rentals. They're, they actually have a twelve hundred instead of thirteen hundred, but they're they're similar in a number of ways and I mean, if if council's serious, I would take, definitely go back. I would suggest go back and have your new director of planning and zoning with building, look at what they've been doing and where their successes have been, what's worked and what hasn't, because they have done quite a bit there. But like I say, as council has to back it.
By the way, when is your retirement date?
The twenty-ninth of this month is my last date.
Well, I just wanted to get down there before then. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
My email, Mr. Turkey.
Hi.
You know what I'm talking about.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you, Director Tracy, for all your service and congratulations on your retirement. I am very excited echoing Counselor Williamson's remarks. And my first thought, just to plant a seed right now, and maybe Attorney Harkness could look into this as well, if others agree, is having more of a tiered or scaled approach to assigning fees, particularly since we know who is outside of our mailing district and outside of our state. And, you know, that's further incentivizing people to be local in terms of their ownership, but also having more consequences for this, but not putting those fees on people who are here locally. So that was just my first idea.
Any other? The only thing that I would have to say, well, one thing, Tracy, I thank you so much for all that you have done. That is a lot of information. And I would like to know, basically, kind of when you talked about the dollars in sense of having more people, because I know who was hired into the job, to see what he has to offer to be able to find out the information we need before the homes get to this, the way that they look. That is my really, that's my number one concern. What do we do before? Like, how many months? Their utility bills or whatever determines or shows us that there is a problem, because you know that's going to be asked. Yes. And congratulation on your retirement.
And if I may just add one thing, with 2020 being the type of year it was, and and hopefully the country moves forward shortly in in a more positive direction. During the 2020 calendar year, for a good, a large part of it, even inspections were put at a halt, other than if it was for emergency situations, electrical, gas, or where a structure is being actually collapsing in. So the building and trade inspectors and even property maintenance inspectors and that were really kind of backed up for quite a period of time. So hopefully that doesn't happen again here. Working our way out of the pandemic, so.
All right. Well, thank you so kindly, because I looked at also those years, you know, when they buy them. So, yeah. All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate you. All right. So at this time, let me grab that. Okay, we'd like to move on to discussions for boards and commissions.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe Councilmember Lanu asked to have the Equity Task Force as a discussion item on as a future agenda item. And with that, I just wanted to bring, we have several boards and commissions with vacant seats on them that need to be filled. I wanted to bring them, bring those to council's attention to encourage your constituents or residents to apply to fill some of these vacant seats. Until we have received applications, we can't vet anyone and put them, then send them to Mayor for her to review, and then essentially before council for approval. So just wanted, we have quite a few. The list has been included in the council packet, but just really, if you can encourage anyone that you know, maybe, who may be interested in serving or sitting on one of these boards and commissions, just really encourage them to apply. The application can be found on the city's website. Or you can reach out to Clerk Domingo. She she would be able to provide that to you.
Guess I better unmute myself. Go ahead, Councilman Clark.
Yes, could you possibly review some of the ones that were already sent in and see if some of those people were interested before or even looked at or talked to about? Because I know that, you know, because I looked at some of the openings, those are some of the same openings that were from last year, way before. When.
Yes, and I believe all applications that we have on file have been passed on to Mayor for her to review and to vet through the city. Then they will be brought before you for a recommend recommendation.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. With that, we did the future agenda item.
Mayor Protem Jackson, I did just have one comment about the Equity Task Force. When when I was following that as a resolution for racism as a public health crisis, I did, I did not make the connection that the Equity Task Force goal is even larger than public health and the connection to racism. So I just wanted to share that the goals for that task force are to achieve solutions that address the legacy of structural and systemic racism in the city of Albion and provide recommendations to the city of Albion's policies and procedures to ensure racial equity is a core element of organizational practices in the city of Albion. And that is a citizen advisory board with two-year terms, and all of the seats are open right now. I have started reaching out to people who I know have a background in this work and would be possibly available to serve. And their first question was, how much time commitment would that look like? And considering there are no applicants yet, I I said I I didn't think that it would be more than a couple hours a month. But I know that there's a lot of work that's needed, so the more involvement, you know, the more hands-on, death-make-like work. So I just wanted to acknowledge that was the intent behind having that on the agenda.
Okay. All right. Councilman, and Williamson, you had your hand raised before she said something.
So I, one thing I want to add to the future agenda items is I want to I want to first have the discussion of recreational sales in the city of Marijuana. I want to move that back to the table for us to have a discussion. I know that all of you, just like I have, have received multiple emails from business owners locally who are ready to move forward with recreational sales in the city. I did a little digging, just all on my own. We're missing out on incredible revenues for the city for recreational sales. So every time someone takes their money to another city or township, they are, they are lining the wallets of those townships and municipalities to do things in their community that could help. So I at least want to bring up the discussion. I do not want to ask Cullen to bring forward any sort of draft resolution yet. I want to make sure that we all talk about it and are comfortable with looking at at least what a draft would look like. And speaking of the timeframe of this, it's it's very much the same as to what we did with medical marijuana. So this, this would be right about the time to talk again about recreational sales within the city. So I want to put that back on the agenda for a discussion, as a discussion item.
Okay. Any other future items, right, Councilman Clark?
With that, I visited Buddy Bunny's, the one up on the street in my district. I did visit that, and I know that they're both wanting to come in and do a presentation. So I would like to be able to have them come in, maybe at the next, I'll contact go up there and see if they'll be ready for the next meeting, and I'll let you know, Ailey, that maybe they can be in, you know, come in and present at our next meeting.
Could we possibly have a representative from the EDC come and talk about recreational sales as well and what the revenues do for communities? I think it'd be nice, is, you know, because I think we're going to get the sales pitch from those who want to do the sales, but I, but I think it'd be good for the council to have information around what actually happens with the recovered money that is given back to the city.
Well, just on that note, I I can, I can tell the council right now, there's, there's, aside from the obvious property taxes and things like that, I mean, obviously, we get our permit and license fees. There is a statutory structure set up for revenue sharing with the state in terms of the taxes and the fees that go to the state. I can tell you that none, the state is not currently distributing money for for marijuana facilities for revenue sharing. Some of the other municipalities I represent have been in this industry for several years and have not received any of that revenue sharing as of yet.
Colin, but the idea of revenue sharing is that they will get to a point where that that revenue will be shared, right, with the municipalities, correct?
So my understanding is, it was the the state had to get to a certain threshold. I want to say it was in the twenty million dollar range. They've exceeded that threshold. They've been past that threshold for some time. The general rumor I I hear amongst the other municipal attorneys is that that money is going to be repurposed. It has not yet been changed in statute, but that is the general consensus that I have heard.
That money, if they decide to share that money tomorrow, we don't stand to get any because we don't have any recreational sales in ours, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, at this time, we're going to move over into public comments.
Yes, we do have.
You have?
Yep, just.
Okay, so at this time, we will have our public comments. Persons addressing the city council shall limit their comments to no more than three minutes. Proper decor is required. Go ahead, please.
Oh, my name's Paul Eggnituck, and I work for State Rep Jim Hodsma. He asked me to sit in and pay attention to the meeting that's left tonight. He, I think he attended maybe the last one, and he'd asked me about a couple issues. It sounded like he cleared some of them up this week during the meeting. But I don't have anything in particular. Just I'll put my contact information in chat. And any of the council members, if you, if you ever want to get in touch with our office, you can. You're always more than well-served by getting, getting getting to us through your your interim city manager. Haley's done a good job of communicating with us when the city needs something. And I'll look into that, the marijuana revenue that the attorney was talking about, Attorney Harkness. I haven't heard anything, but I don't always hear the latest rumors. Sometimes, sometimes the municipal attorneys or the municipal municipal league might know more about that type of stuff, but I'll find out if there's any answers on that, too. But if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them. And I said, I'll I'll put my contact information in chat. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other? Thank you, Paul, for your comments.
Yes, we have one more.
All right, can you folks hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Hey, absolutely. Mayor Protem Jackson, council members, interim city manager Snyder, and the residents of City of Albion that are watching this evening. Good evening, Gary Tompkins, your county commissioner. Great to see you folks this evening. Certainly, at some point in time, I would love to be able to see you guys in person at some point, so hopefully we can get there at some point in time. I'll try to be real brief this evening. The Board of Commissioners held its reorganizational meeting on January seventh. Commissioner Frisbee from District Four was selected as our chair, and I was certainly humbled. Uh, Commissioner Frisbee from District Four was uh selected as our chair, and I was certainly humbled and accepted. Uh, I was elected as the vice chair of the County Board of Commissioners. Uh, which is very positive because now it gives us a better, uh, greater presence of the east side of the county to have a seat at the table at the county. So I look forward to being able to sit at the table and work on behalf of. Uh, my district and certainly the residents of City of Albion as relates to county uh government. Uh, Cowan County residents aged sixty-five and older who want to get the COVID nineteen vaccine. Many of you have seen this, uh, certainly can call two six nine four four one oh nine one two to schedule an appointment. I've heard from many, many constituents that there's been, it's been crazy with the amount of uh high call volume that's been on that number. Uh, you'll get a a ringtone, hang up, busy signal, etc. Uh, they obviously will continue to urge you to call that number. But if you do have an opportunity, I do know the Cowan County Senior Services is also being able to take this as well and get people signed up as well. So take advantage of that opportunity if the folks want to. Uh, right now, currently, the Cowan County Health Department, we are working to find a, uh, once we move into the next phase, which goes beyond the sixty-five and older, sixty-five and under. Uh, we're currently working on getting a very large, trying to find a large area uh in the city of Albion that we can have a mass vaccination clinic moving forward. So stay tuned for that. Working on getting a bigger one there uh as we look at uh the next phase. Uh, Cowan County Solid Waste Program has recently installed a what they call Sharps disposal drop boxes in Albion City Hall, as well as. The Regional Law Enforcement Center Marshall in the taller building in Battle Creek. Uh, these drop boxes funded through the Firekeeper's Local Revenue Sharing Board grant. Will increase Sharps disposal access for Cowan County residents by providing year-round collection of Sharps. Uh, these drop boxes are for residential use only, and they want to make sure that they place them in a shatterproof container. Uh, those items that are accepted in the drop box include needles, syringes, landslide, and auto injectors. So just something for your for your residents to know if, in fact, they're looking for a spot in which to uh deposit the sharp disposals. Certainly, Albion City Hall is one of the locations. Um, for that. And then on January twenty-seventh, uh, this coming next week, uh, we've organized a meeting with the sheriff and the prosecutor. Uh, and some other township officials. And I know it certainly happens in the city of Albion, and we'll continue to work to to that point. But to have a really substantive discussion on illegal dumping issues that continue to plague our areas. Uh, many people, many of the townships in and around the city, as well as the city I know, deal with illegal dumping issues. And I know we've talked about it for the last several years. But it's really time to have a substantive discussion and start to have a uh a real discussion about doing something about the problems that we are all having. So. Um, as you, as most of you know, uh, that burden of of paying for it, it it falls back certainly on the city and on our townships. And. Really, we gotta do, we've got to find a way to uh to eliminate that. So and then quite, and then real quickly, uh, to John Tracy, if he's still on, certainly, congratulations on your retirement. Thank you for your service to the city and uh hopefully all the best and well wishes in your retirement. So with that being said, that's my uh report for this evening. As a reminder, you guys, if you ever need anything, please don't hesitate to reach out to me either by uh email, text message, or phone, and I'm always here to help in any way I can. So with that being said, each one of you have a great evening, and thank you very much.
Wonderful, wonderful. Thank you so much for bringing that information to us, so precise. And um also, we just thank you for joining us tonight, giving us all the thorough information that we can pass on to one another. I mean, to our city, basically. At this time, we'd like to go off into our um city management, city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Sorry, um, a copy of my report was included in the council packet. Um, so we received a lot of calls regarding the Granger billing. Um, more specific, the yard waste collection fee. Um, previously, the yard waste collection fee, it was prorated over eight months and only charged during. The actual months of pickup. So that was April through November. However, under the new contract, the fee is equally spread out over twelve months to kind of provide a more consistent billing. Residents are not being charged for yard waste um during the off months. It's just now they're being, it's been spread out amongst the twelve months to just have a consistent billing. Um, with that being said, the monthly fee only increased for twenty twenty-one, a dollar twenty-nine. And I just want to remind everyone of the additional services that have been. Added under the new contract, which include the unlimited yard waste collection, the blue bag, um curbside recycling, as well as the monthly bulk item collection. So please reassure your constituents if they um bring questions or concerns to you that they are not being charged extra for the yard waste on these off months, that it's just now being billed consistently. Yeah, um, every month instead of just during those um, the eight months where we do um receive the yard waste pickup. Um, the city is also, we are looking to coordinate um the citywide cleanup with the annual Cowan County Scrap Tire and Electronics event. Um, we have a tentative citywide cleanup date scheduled for Saturday, June twenty-sixth. However, we are just waiting to receive confirmation from the county that that works for for their crew. So we will have more information to come. Um, the Director of Planning and Building, as you all are aware, Director Tracy will be retiring from the city here um at the end of this month. I am happy to um announce that we have filled his position with Ian Arnold. Um, he, his first day was today. Uh, Mr. Arnold. Has a bachelor's degree in public and nonprofit in administration with a focus in community development and planning from Grand Valley. Um, State University. We are very happy to have him here um to join our team. Um, also, COVID nineteen vaccine, Commissioner Tompkins just gave everyone an update. Just want to remind everyone, if you do fall within one of the. Of eligible um groups that are receiving the vaccine vaccine, um, you're encouraged to call the Cowan County Health Department and leave a message, leave your information. Um, they will, someone will contact you to get you scheduled when we have, when they have open availability um for that. And I just, as a reminder, City Hall operations, City Hall's front lobby remains to be open to the public Monday through Friday from ten AM to three PM. And with that, that is all for my report today.
Okay, thank you so much. Just one question on your report. Are they only, are you gonna only have just one cleanup that Saturday twenty-sixth?
Yes, as a standard, we normally um hold a one-day large community-wide event, one where um we'll have one station at Ketchum Field, the other at Harris Field. Um, so yes, we are looking to do just one citywide event, but just remind everyone that you do have that month, the one free. Um, bulk item pickup that you can schedule through Granger year-round.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. Okay, at this time, if there are any um mayor and council member comments. Go ahead, Councilman Will Williamson.
A big shout out and thank you to Mayor Protem Jackson tonight for picking up the meeting and the mayor's absence for her dealing with her family. And thank you for running a smooth meeting and. Keeping us all going. And I I know it's not easy to put on the spot, so thank you so much for that. Um, again, thank you to outgoing uh planning director, uh John Tracy. Congratulations on your retirement. Um, thank you for that helpful data. Um, and you know, I just, I'm feeling well tonight at council. Thank you to my fellow council members who are working hard to make sure we keep things moving in a positive direction here in Albion. So thank you.
Councilman Clark?
Thank you. It was a great meeting tonight. I do want to do a slight update um to the council members. I did meet with um a. A couple of different individuals about moving forward about the grocery store. I will be given an update on that um in the future. Um, because we came up with some more plans and some more directives for that. So just wanted to let you know.
Any other um comments? And I would love to say I thank you awful, working with me, bearing with me, and helping me get through this. And also, I um want to say once again, um, John Tracy, yes, um, congratulations on your retirement. It's been um nice working with you, even though. The businesses that you and I have done together. And also, um, Commissioner Tom Tompkins. Um, I love what you said, and I just love the energy that you bring. And I want to continue to thank you, um, city attorney for all that you have done also. And I will continue once again to um thank you, councilmen, and also the city, um, I might not call, I'll be um the city manager Snyder. Intern um for doing all that you have done, very expedient, and I just enjoy working with you. I feel privileged. Okay, if if there's nothing else, I'd like to um have a motion to excuse the the absent council members.
Come on. Support.
Okay, um, city um clerk Domingo. Thank you for all that you have done tonight, too. You know, I I'm used to saying Jill, but I had to come appropriate. So I appreciate you bearing with me tonight. Can you do a roll call?
Sure. Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Reed? Lanu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Jackson.
Yes. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, guys. Have a nice weekend.
No, we need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Absent, yeah, that was just to excuse the absent board members. Now you just need one more motion.
I think I got excited. I'm sorry. Thank you so much. Need to have an emotion to adjourn.
Support. And then just one final roll call vote.
Okay, city uh Domingo, clerk clerk Domingo, roll call, please.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lanu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Jackson.
Yes.
All right. Good night, everyone.
Good night. Yes, good night. Thank you.